By the.
Sorry.
So he is going to present tonight his case on why he feels there's a need in the community for this. It's it's something that's permitted. We just need to revise any special conditions. If you want to place any special conditions on this particular event space. So it's kind of up to you. I know Bob Hall gave a permit to him to finish the inside of the space. So Bob Hall was familiar with what he was doing on the site. I discussed it with Randy when it was presented to me and we felt it needed to come back before the planning commission, just to make sure if there were needing to be any changes or special conditions put on it.
Just for clarification, this this was a special use in the first place, right? Or was this a site plan?
Originally, it was a site planned for the vet clinic, and this was just additional space at the back of the building that he wasn't utilizing and was trying to, you know, kind of fill a need within the community. And so he came in, talked to Bob Hall. I don't know what those Mike can probably give you a little bit more of that. He brought it to me when he was finishing up. I needed to do a final on it. But technically zoning doesn't really get involved in how people finish the insides of their buildings. So anyways, got a couple of large garage doors. I think a few of you have stopped by or driven past there. Fire department did rate it for, I think, seventy eight people. Hopefully not seventy eight people be kind of crammed in there, but uh, but it does have two large garage doors. So emptying the building would be real easy. So I'll let Mike kind of present what he wants to go through. I believe I included the original information that was provided back when this was originally done back in twenty two. So if you wanted, and there were no conditions put on him by the planning commission when he originally came in for the vet clinic to get everything up and running for his business. So it's kind of up to you guys. If you want to put any conditions on it, or if you have questions for him, and that's why he's here tonight, to see if they need to make any modifications to that. Fowler, F O W L E R.
Is there any issues you see there?
Um, no, I didn't. I I don't. I, you know, I don't know what the maximum capacity is going to be. I think the use of the of this room is going to be after hours, after his clinic hours and on weekends. So it's a actually a permitted use in commercial. Okay.
The vet clinic is a permitted use in commercial.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, so yeah, as Deb said, we essentially we purchased the building in twenty two. We opened the veterinary clinic. We had unused space in the back that was doing nothing and smelled like mouse pee after thirty years of being a feed store. So I gutted it two summers ago, a summer and a half, something like that. Spray foam, but added windows. At the time I had spoken with Bob, let him kind of know my intention. And at the time Bob said that that wouldn't require all of this, but here we are. And that it would just be a very simple edit and amend the current special use permit. Obviously, some things have changed since that point. So I'm going through the process. Basically, the the reason for turning it into the back is fairly simple. First year we were open at the vet clinic, we went to have our little holiday get together with the clinic staff and we went, where can you do that around here? And the answer was really nowhere. We ended up in a back booth at PGO's kind of stuffed into a corner. And so, you know, when we opened, I don't know if any of you attended or saw, but we had an open house when we first opened the clinic and we kind of just opened the garage doors back there and had a chili cook off and whatever else. And so we kind of just went, well, we could do that. We also have a one kid with a November birthday. And so that was the other idea was like, you know, it would be nice like, and we've spoken with neighbors, friends, people in the community that have all said like, yeah, like it'd be really nice to have something for a winter time kids birthday where you're not having every relative and friend you know, crammed into your house. So that was kind of the whole process behind it. This isn't really going to be something that, you know, clearly our primary business there is the veterinary clinic. This is going to be a small side project at best. This is basically just, I wanted to utilize the space for something and we could turn it into a cool space. A lot of the time it's me and my four year old running around back there and jumping on the bounce house. So I mean, and honestly, at first this was kind of going to be primarily just for our own use and for the vet clinic use. And then as I progressed further into the project and I realized, well, it's kind of a cool space. Had some neighbors over there for some football games and they went, this is a really cool space. We'd rent this out. You know, it's kind of, so then it kind of went into what it is now. And so that's really the intention. We're not ever going to be open during clinic hours. So we're not going to, you know, have dual competing uses with parking or anything else. You know, so far we've had, basically like we've had a few veterinary meetings back there and things like that, that, you know, just some doctors show up, somebody gives a presentation on the TV back there and that's about it. I don't anticipate that it's going to be a, you know, at a particularly busy venue. I just think that it's something the community could use. And I think that it's a decent use for the space that otherwise would just be sitting there doing nothing. So that's what I'd like to do.
One question, will food be served? Will you be serving food?
No.
No?
No. There's no.
Beverages or?
No.
Okay.
Um, I think I, yeah, I, the intention there is to have a contract that lays out that you can bring your own food. Alcohol's not allowed. Yes, that's what we did with our most recent holiday party is we had the restaurants in Traverse City bring food in. But there's no kitchen facility back there. There's no refrigerator or kitchenette or anything. So it's really not, you can bring food, but no, there's really not.
Had not, what about bathroom facilities? Do you have that all covered?
Yes. Yep. There's one bathroom. It's ADA compliant. It's, yep, had to cut some concrete and cut a nice little line across our parking lot to tie into our subject, but that was, yeah, one of the the hangups there, but we figured it out. Unfortunately, we had enough capacity with septic, but they let us do it.
Yeah, they I I was a little messed up. Oh my God, that's not ADA compliant. Not even.
When I took.
I was there two weeks ago and I said, oh, oh. Then I went back yesterday. Cause I was thinking, I says, I know these people. They've been there before. There's no way in the world.
Yeah.
They're going to try to.
That is an older, that is an older photo.
I lived with a handicapped person for many years and built two houses. So anyway, I went back yesterday and I've got pictures if anyone wants to see them. It's fully compliant.
I didn't realize when I attached that photo, that was prior to me hanging handrails and.
When I, when I, I said, don't they, so I went back yesterday and that would have been, the other question I have is there's seventy eight people, that would be thirty nine parking spots and two handicap spots. And I didn't see any indication on your, where the handicap spots were.
First and foremost, I don't think, I believe, I don't, I haven't come up with finalized contract yet, but we're going, it won't be seventy eight people. That's too much for I mean, we can paint lines for an additional handicap parking spot back there, but my thought process on that was if you're renting the space, then you've got full use of the parking lot space and whatever else, and you can park wherever you would like. So if there's a family member that has a disability.
Between twenty five and fifty, you have to have two handicap spots designated. That's my only requirement.
I mean, I can add one. It's not hard to to get somebody to paint it and put a sign on it.
But it has to be done. It's in the ADA, it's in our yeah, it's in our ordinance too.
Not an issue.
Think that's number twenty nine, if I recall. Now that might be the one for lighting. That was another question, lighting. I don't know. If we have a requirement.
We haven't changed any lighting.
For that for parking, you know, what it would be, but.
We just have, we have the lights down the side of the building that are all down facing and.
Those kind of question like two for a night for going back out to the cars and stuff to get it lit up or.
Yeah, yeah, that's the ones down that entire sidewalk down that whole side of the building, like the parking lot.
Yeah, you have those spots across. And it was, you know, I'm, I'm just not sure if lighting is required or not. I don't, I don't know.
We have light.
Building, buildings already there.
You got the light buildings and the buildings. Yeah, you have.
And we have lighting at the front as well, those two overhangs. We have lights that are on all night there. And then we have all down the entire side. So pretty much anywhere where there's parking, there's, there is some form of lighting.
Yeah, that's in here. Okay.
So, um, so the questions. Have you determined what you want to see for capacity?
Um, I have not determined the exact number. I would say based on just things that we've had there, probably fifty would be a maximum. I mean, I guess it depends if you have, if it were kids' party and there were, you know, a bunch of little kids that don't take up a whole lot of space, you can fit a few more of them, but I don't anticipate. So what I have back there currently, I have folding tables and chairs. I believe I have nine or ten tables and I have forty chairs. So that's at present, I don't see a scenario where we would really exceed forty to forty five. And also at that point, I said, you're getting pretty cramped for space. So.
Did, just out of curiosity, do you still continue or do you still plan to continue with the with the clinic? Dog clinic, animal clinic?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I just need projects to do. So my wife is like, I'm running, she runs the practice. She's the doctor. I have, I work for the state of Michigan. I have a whole separate day job. This is just, I needed something to keep me busy and it smelled gross back there. And I was like, well, we're going to do something with it. And this is where we landed. So like I said, this is purely just kind of a side making use of the space. It was something we wanted. It was something that felt the community could utilize and just kind of went for it. Yeah, my wife's the primary.
Came to our house when my wife's dog was dying and she came and gave it shots when she worked in upper.
Oh, it's very, very. We have any other questions for?
Okay, just a couple. So your hours of operation close at ten o'clock?
Yeah, that was what I had on there. I don't see any need to.
And there's, there's no other outdoor signage proposed?
No. I don't think so. I mean, I've got right now, if anyone stopped over there on that outside door, I've just got a small vinyl thing there. I don't.
There's no sign out by the road with that.
No, I think a listing on Google Maps. I mean, I've thought about potentially putting like a vinyl on like one of the big garage doors, like with slightly larger lettering. So it's easier to see when you pull in, but that's about the only thing I was considering. So no actual physical signage out by the roadway.
And then there's nothing proposed outside the building. You're not looking at any outdoor space.
No, not currently. I mean, if it does well and and a couple of years from now, I need another project to do and who knows?
What would be the hours of operation?
So hours of operation that I have in here would be so weekdays would be after the clinic closes, which is five o'clock. So
So what time?
Five to ten, ten PM probably. And then on weekends, AM to ten PM, full day. Like I said, I don't anticipate, I have no, no kids birthday parties going past ten o'clock and any professional meetings that we have back there is are should be well wrapped up within that timeframe. So.
You know, I think that, you know, needs to be discussed.
Yeah, yeah, it's in, I have it written in there.
Okay.
On your enlargement of the space, it comes along the increased capacity need on your sewage septic tank. Have you had that evaluated?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Based on projected numbers of.
If you could get
what specifically needs to be signed up on? Because when we, we requested it through the building.
There is a form in here. If you looked in the packet there. Environment, environmental health. This is one I think they originally allowed the vet clinic.
The original. That was the original for ten to ten employees, I believe. But I believe that in the grant, your engineers said that the septic that you couldn't add any more bathrooms at the capacity of the septic tank after at that time. And you had a precaution in two twenty six, twenty four. And I spoke with someone at the environmental health and they need some, some more information from you. But that they can go ahead and
Thought that was all covered when we pulled permits. No, when we pulled permits, we went through this again. They came back out. They looked at it again. We requested and they specifically asked us, what do you intend? What do you think estimated number of employees at the clinic during the day and clients come through? And then what do you anticipate for occupancy for the back event space specifically? Because before we ever made the decision to cut across and take significant expense to cut across the parking lot and tie this all in cut concrete, we definitely made sure eyes were dotted and Ts were crossed as far as capacity. So yes, that.
Do you have those documents that says?
I can, I'll have to ask my general contractor and make sure.
Probably in your, if you go to the Grand Traverse website where you apply for the permit, there's all of your documents should still be there.
Okay. Okay, I'll find it though. But yes, I know that was something that was definitely looked into extensively prior to us doing it.
If you could provide that documentation. And you can give that three months.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other questions? Before we discuss.
We should close the public hearing when, when ready.
Make an emotion?
Yeah. There's a written, written comments received.
I don't have any written comments that I were, Deb, you don't have any? Is there any public comment? In this public hearing?
Michael, is the, will you be on site when this, these parties are going on or are you going to give a key out to people to access the building for their event or?
Yeah.
Going to have like a key punch to.
So I, yes, I plan to either give them the key ahead of time where I will have a small lockbox that allows them in. And I also have cameras. I have an outdoor camera to kind of monitor. I also have an indoor camera monitor to just make sure that things are out of hand and nothing's going on. So yes, I will be able to keep an eye on it, even though not physically present.
I did have a question. Do you have a lock between the practice and the bathroom?
I do not. I have a handle lock. But it is a door that swings inward towards the practice. So it would be pretty hard to force. I mean, I guess you could break the handle, but at that point you could break any locking system, probably. You were determined and I have multiple cameras. I have several cameras throughout the clinic, several cameras in the back outside. So.
All right. No other.
Easier to get in through an outside window than it would be through that door.
All right. You entertain a motion?
Don't move. Close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing, I second.
Hold on.
We're closing public comment.
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I will discuss this and thank you.
I can make some comments here if you'd like to start this off with.
Yep.
So this is a so the vet clinic is, I understand it is a use by right in the commercial district and what's being proposed here is a special use, which would be on the same property. As you know, to approve a special use, we have to have findings and conclusions. We have to find certain things and have certain conclusions. And then as Deb said, add any conditions that that we want or feel that are necessary to address any concerns that have been raised. Got a few things written down. I can start with that. If there's other people with thoughts, that'd be great.
I have a quick question. I, I was under the understanding that, that the event portion is also a right, is a use by right.
No.
It says right here on our back. Page two of three, it's above ten pages back.
Don't need this week, separate.
Yes.
Section, Article eight, section eight, ten. Tools and event rental.
Yeah.
And you need a copy of those. Want a copy of the ordinance for commercial?
Event rental.
Rapid tool and event rental establishments are listed as related uses, section eight, ten.
Okay, so at the very beginning of the stamp, it says SLUP, special land use permit.
Well, that's another question. I don't understand why it's a special use of permit. Right. So I, I understand that they want to operate two different things on the same building and that would, that kind of makes me think about the special use thing. But if it's, if it's a use by right, I, I don't quite understand, but the amendment, when you say amendment, now I get it. Amendment to the original special use.
To the original special use allowing conditions for this event space.
So the vet clinic was a special use.
The vet clinic was a special use. And since they're adding, it's in the same structure. So we're just amending it to include that there will be an event space in any conditions you want to put on it. And so, and it's, it's a page four dash two, article four of the new zoning ordinance that was established effective last Thursday. So on its letter A.
Thank you.
Do we want to have as a condition a maximum capacity?
I'll let Randy finish that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Well, I guess that's different than what I thought. I was a little confused. That's why I was asking early on about that. So I mean, I don't generally see any problem with what we're proposing here. I, I guess I would just want to make sure it's clear that the hours of operation cease at ten o'clock. There's no outdoor signage and there's no events happening outside the building. Other than that, those are, those would be my concerns about, those could be conditions and our findings are that the proposed event space as a, as a special use, that it is a I'm sorry, it is a permitted use in the commercial zoning district. And then the proposed change is not inconsistent with the commercial uses in the area.
I think we should add Carl's comment about that.
Yes. One question first, though, does anybody have any reason that they would not want this, to us to go into discussion on any conditions? There any reason why you would not vote for this? Well, we're going to talk about conditions, but I don't want to go that far. We've got if we're going to stop before that.
No, we've got some, a few minor conditions, I believe. And but other than that, I don't think, as long as it comply with those, I don't think there'd be a problem.
Sun bucket. I have, I'll just mention the few that I, that I wrote down here, the five to ten PM for the hours.
And the proposed use, it says six to ten.
Would that be on the weekends also?
Eight AM to ten PM on the weekends.
So eight AM to ten PM on the weekends?
Monday to Friday, six to ten, Saturday, Sunday, eight to ten.
And then the next one I had listed down was a signage up by the road. The second, secondary signage by the road. No events outside.
Yeah, no event space outside the building.
If you want to come back and do something later outside, then come back to us.
Essentially, so like in the instance of it's a summer day and someone has the door one open and there's a, you know, maybe a table or two outside in front of the building there in the parking lot area. An issue. I mean, if I'm not there, I doubt I will have, you know, complete rollover whether someone opens the door and has kids playing, you know, and some yard games, cornhole, things like that. So I mean, there's a chance on a nice day that someone could be outside in the parking lot at part of.
That's a good point.
That's reasonable.
But I think that is reasonable. I mean, we're not talking, what we're looking for is we don't want like a concert outside or something.
Exactly, that's.
Okay, those are the, the, and the handicap part.
And the other one was compliance with the, with Denise's questions on the health department.
Think that's just proof that.
Yeah.
Capacity matches the sewer requirements, the septic tank requirement. And, and I guess we didn't talk about it, but the noise if you have a group of people in there that, that even with children, you have older, you know, have older people with parties, they might have music which you know, would have to be at a level that would be I guess audible from the road on M seventy two, which is in a big restriction, but I.
So. Who's always ordinance?
Yeah.
So I think that.
Well, just if it puts your mind at ease, the spray foam insulation throughout that building significantly cuts down on noise because I have to have the TV and some speakers back there. And I have actually turned that volume up fairly substantially and then gone outside to test the level when it actually is even at fairly high levels inside, it does not transmit outside. It shouldn't be an issue.
Let's go around and see if there's anything else out.
No, that was it. Just compliance with, with, with Denise's question there, proof that this is in compliance with the Grand Traverse County Health Department.
Randy?
Good.
Mike?
I'm okay.
Denise? Yep. You agree? Carol?
Uh, we need a motion then?
We do. I think we want to be sure that she has the conditions directly. We're going to read them back to us.
Question about the first one.
Yes.
When you were talking about the hours of five to ten, as discussed this evening, but that the packet said six to ten weekdays.
Okay.
With what the packet says.
So Monday through Friday, six PM to ten PM. Saturday and Sunday, eight AM to ten PM.
I, I think we, I we, we should be identifying the facts and the conclusions. So I
Just want to make sure she.
No road or secondary signage, no events outside, handicap parking curve required by compliance or proof that occupancy matches the Grand Traverse County septic requirements. Down and down. Want to miss anything?
I think so.
Healthy part.
What is, is that suffered?
No.
No, that's interesting.
That's all that I had as far as conditions.
And we're also offering the findings of the proposed event spaces of permitted use in the commercial zoning district.
Randy, did you turn your microphone just a little bit more towards, no, this way? The, yeah, they're direct, you know. You've got to be speaking into them, not to the side. Thank you.
Okay.
So do we need to vote on that we are all in agreement that it's?
At least, at least special finding.
I don't know. They have to be individual, but I will. As long as we're clear on what we're voting on. And then so the first finding is that the event space is a permitted use in the commercial zoning district. And secondly, that the proposed use of the rear portion of the building as an event space is not inconsistent with the commercial nature of the area. And secondly, that the proposed use of the rear portion of the building as an event space is not inconsistent with the commercial nature of the area. The motion? Yes, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
By Jacobson? Oh, this is the motion on the findings.
Okay, Jacobson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Pelton and Robol?
Yes. Yes.
Disposition? Correct? We're approving this, would entertain a motion. That's what we just did, isn't it? That was just the findings, now we're going to add the. Oh, okay. Right?
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve this with the conditions as listed.
The second motion before you vote. In your motion, Mike. We wish to include the.
Conditions?
Number SPR two point two five dash one in your motion, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose that should be in there, yes.
Thank you. The conditions in the motion.
With the conditions that we have already listed.
Okay, this was as discussed.
Yeah, you should list those.
We, yeah, we did, we did.
But you want them listed out in your motion itself?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Second?
It was me.
Do you prefer to call?
Yes.
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 The.
Yes.
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 So just as a comment, I understand people on, on Zoom are able to hear us. They're not able to hear. They are able to hear us. I don't know if they can contribute when it, the public comment, but they can hear the meeting. Nobody raised their hands. We all have a chance again, dude. Want to make a final count out?
Well, my comment for my staff report.
Comment on this.
My only other comments were I, I didn't want to see any parking along M. seventy-two, and I don't know if, if that somebody would want it right in as a condition. I've already talked to Michael about it. Trees along M. seventy-two is kind of important and, and we've kind of talked about making sure that there's trees, trees lining M. seventy-two to, you know, our wonderful co-pod, our nice little visual tree line streets. Those are my only couple of conditions, and if you do decide to put a sign on the garage door, just come and see me size-wise and, and you can get a permit for that from me. Okay, that's really all I had. I was just curious how people were going to get in and out and if somebody would be monitoring it, but it sounds like with the cameras that should be an issue. Anyway, that's all I had. Thanks. And, and in my staff report, I listed any conditions that I suggested.
Moving on to, is there anything else? Anybody want to mention with this? Good. All right, moving on to rule of laws. We did that before it was special. Approval of the previous meeting minutes. The only correction I have in that is Deb's report was in the wrong month. So it's November and it should be December, correct? Or January? This says November report, it should be January.
Put that on the agenda.
What's that?
They have said November on the agenda. So that should be January.
Right.
There's a typo on the second page. It should be Ms. Pescatello in the second paragraph. Just to me right there.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, not Mister.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah. On the page five. Six, the six line down, including a small paragraph there, it says a zoning board of the Gills meeting was held on one twenty-three, twenty-five, where an appeal was heard and denied with regards to a shed built without permission. And then down on the page again, in, in Carl's report, it's, it basically says the same thing. Or what I mean is, shouldn't that be listed under Carl's report, under the Z B A report?
I believe they both reported.
Right.
They're both reported on.
Remember, talk.
All right.
You're paying a motion to help these, with those corrections?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from February's meeting with the corrections listed.
I'd second.
So Keaton? So, all in favor?
I.
Can you pose? Here. All right. Correspondence, we have one male gentleman that would be interested in possible R O S committee. Anybody knows this gentleman or not, but catch the email on there. We can discuss that when we discuss the forming of the R O S again, unless anybody has any comments? None noted? Hey, reports?
Uh, zoning report's just the one page. Had more complaints this past month than I had permit requests, had a few things come in that have been pending, but of course taxes were due mid-February, so a lot of people hadn't have, didn't have their taxes paid, so the processing of their permits got stalled. Right now I've got three land use permit, or not land use, well, no, I just approved three land use permits. There's at least two in the pipeline for amendments, one you're going to hear about tonight where they want to amend their zoning district, and they want to combine some parcels so that they can expand their industrial businesses. So those are up and coming for both A I S and for Grand Travers Plastics. And I've got three land divisions on my desk too, and Dawn just got back from Mexico, so I'm sure she'll dig out in the next couple of weeks so that those will be moving right along. Otherwise, things are picking up, snow's melting and everybody's seeing ground and everybody wants to start building, so. Do you have any questions for me regarding my report? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I have nothing other than what we'll talk about later. Green, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Nice. Yep. Randy? Okay, township board is meeting again next week. It's budget season. I know that there's been some exchange of information based upon the last meeting of the planning commission and there was going to be meeting this Monday and then another hearing, I think on the seventeenth, that is going to continue with that, that conversation on the budget. So we, obviously we haven't had a chance to look at the entire budget yet for the, for the township. I, let's see here, also wanted to, we'll talk about this later in, in the agenda, but we had the, from their last meeting, the request for the planning commission to work on the private road ordinance that was actually passed at their last meeting. The issue on the short-term rental, however, was, I just paused, I guess, in terms of having the opportunity to have a joint meeting with the planning commission and the town board. So we make sure that we're all on the same page as far as what we're working on. So later in the agenda, we'll have a discussion about potential dates for that joint meeting. And then the township board again is meeting on Monday, so we'll take those dates to them and see if we can get that scheduled within the next thirty to sixty days. And have a good conversation about that and a few other issues that agenda is still likely being put together. Another issue out there, just to give you a heads up, it has to do with the capital improvements plan for the township. That is just alluded to in the master plan, but there's a lot more to talk about in that regard, so. Stay tuned. Any update on like the master plan? Yep, that's again an agenda item later on, but the. You mean, actually, did the board do anything about that or? Well, they did, yes, they passed that resolution that basically said that the planning commission is the final authority on the master plan adoption and reversed what had been done before back in two thousand eight, and I described that the ordinance or the resolution that was passed back then had to be revisited because it quoted the wrong section of the Planning Act. Because the Planning Act was updated shortly after that, so a new resolution was prepared, sent to the township attorney. The township board looked at that. We left open the question of whether they wanted to approve the master plan or not. They thought that the master plan is primarily the planning commission's responsibility and decided not to approve it, not, not that they're disapproving it, this, they're letting your approval be the final approval on it. So, and that's been, that's done in some places, other places have the city council or the township board approving it in final form, so it's a, it's the choice that the each local, each local government has to do that either way. I think it's a a reflection of positive thoughts about the planning commission and the work that was done and that they, they feel there's no need to get in there and second guess things or delay the approval of that any further. So we have a master plan. You do, yep, and there'll be copies here shortly as soon as I get Denise's signature put into the, the master plan document, so.
Do, did the, did the, um, the board provide any directions about this short-term rental complaint?
No, I think that's what we really want to talk about at, at the joint meeting, exactly how to approach this and, and what the thoughts are, so we're all on the same page before. And how a committee might be structured and.
But specifically, the one that Deb was talking about, they haven't given the attorney any direction.
No, the, in terms of the complaint, are you talking about?
Yeah.
I, I don't know for sure about that, where that individual complaint is. The issue on short-term rentals is that we should be stepping back and looking at how we regulate or don't regulate short-term rentals and whether that's appropriate, given what we know from the community survey that said, maybe there's some support for that here. I don't know. But there's enough gray area there to want to revisit that.
Any community that has taken a short-term rent, like work out, it's been, I think, Petoskey was like two years, I mean, it takes a lottery. So it's not something you do without in a couple of months.
No, that, that's not what I'm referring to, though. I'm, I'm referring to Deb's zoning report where she's talking about the, I mean, because right now they're not allowed.
Yeah.
Right.
So she's.
They have not made a decision.
So there's another layered issue with that, and that has to do with the issue of a civil infraction ordinance, which might take the place of what we're doing now. So it's a little more complicated than, than that, so, and the proper path forward legally to enforce what we have now and then longer term is what we have consistent with public opinion. Anything else? Nope. Carol? You have anything for us?
No, there was no meeting.
Hey, unfinished business. I think we've already done the celebration of the conditions, correct? Arm tasting rooms suspension. We did receive some thankfully some help on this. In your packet, you should see, it's Milton Township. Milton Township and Elk Rapids. Townships. Briefly, does everybody remember what we're talking about here? Maybe if I could get you to come up and just briefly go over again what we're, yes, please. Sadie, right?
Okay, so I did, I put together one that, like a proposal, but that we would like to see it for an ordinance. It's very basic and it's like, I feel like it's easier to start super simple and then build upon that. You can see in like Milton's and Elk Rapids, there's definitely some areas where probably either particular things happened and they decided that this is what they wanted for that space, so you just, I just thought, I'm going to start really simple because I looked at a lot of other townships too, and a lot of them just don't, they just get really nitty gritty, and I know that no matter what, as we work through this process, that's what's going to happen. We're, you, everybody, it'll be a team effort to hopefully bring it to what everybody is happy with and that the ordinance meets what everybody wants. So the one that I propose that just says wineries and tasting rooms for Whitewater Township is very basic. It's just a starting point. And then there's Milton Townships and Elk Rapids Townships. And like we talked about last week, this isn't, this is obviously my business and this is what we really want to do with our farm. But if this goes in, if we are to do this, you know, it means that any farm can do it. But it does mention in here, like, you can make it, you have to have this many planted acres. I think this has at least fifty planted acres. There's some township that only require four planted acres of fruit that you're using, so you can regulate it that way too, and the farm sizes and stuff. Is there any questions on what I gave you? Like I said, it's, it's just starting, we're starting at the very beginning, so.
This question I have for you is timeframe, or I know we talked about that a little bit before, you're still working on that. Have you got any kind of thing nailed down yet about?
I mean, I know everything takes time, but my, I'm, I would love to have this ability by the fall. That's our huge busy season and that would be huge for us, but like I said last week too, you know, it takes time. I have to do, there's this side of it, but then there's also the processing side of it and I was figuring out that and who we're going to work with and how, so we have a lot to learn and it's at the beginning stages, but I'm trying to do both sides of it, but if we could even start small this fall and just have one or two options available and work up, but that's our, that would be awesome.
Anybody have any questions for her while she's up here? Great, okay.
What's your name again? Sadie Merchant. Myrtle and Mods.
Did you give us something?
Did I give you something?
Or did you?
It's in, it's in your packet.
Yeah, it's the.
It's in your packet.
I emailed it.
It says Williamsburg, Michigan, Whitewater Township, current zoning ordinance linked here. This is, this is her.
This, yeah.
This is what she would like to see and what she's telling us and she's like, just start small and work on this.
Page forty-nine, I believe is, is what Sadie wrote.
It starts at page forty-four and goes to page forty.
The part she gave us is page forty-nine.
Forty-nine, yeah.
She gave us, yeah, part two, forty-four.
Okay, yeah.
She gave us the Milton Township one.
But the propose, what she's proposing. At the last meeting that it's, it's not a liquor license that you need, it's something else?
It's, oh crap, I don't have my.
All winemakers license.
Well, my.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And it's all, it's the MLCC, so the Michigan Liquor Control Commission is who regulate, who like regulates everything.
Okay.
And they need the sign, like there's an application I do through them and they need to sign off from the township. That it's allowed.
Question, I, I don't know if I, I don't have a question.
If we have any more of our questions, we'll let her sit down, I guess. Thank you. Go ahead Denise.
Yeah, the tasting room is with a winery. So that would be, and then some places that over fifty percent of the product of could be produced. And then there's acreage that between five and ten, twenty acres separately designated. And then not mentioned in here that somewhere in our ordinance, you know, I it's parking is, is, in other townships, it's one parking space, about three people. If you're talking about having any type of I don't know, I was looking at it too, so I don't know what these, they're thinking of, but also if you have like a guest room, you have to have one.
Yeah, I think I wanted to talk about this a little.
Please tell Diane to speak into her microphone, Mar, we can't hear her.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about this, will be talk about the ROS committee. Getting that set up to deal with some of this stuff, you know, because we can't sit here and talk about all that and make a decision or anything, where I think the ROS committee can be tasked with different projects as we go, you know, when we're ready for them to work on the short term rentals, they'll already be in place and already been working on some things, so. That's my thought is as we get projects like this, we're actually gonna put those right to the ROS. If that's what we all agree on, but we'll talk about that later. But I just wanted to get this out there so that we could see it and you had time to look at it. And if you had any questions for them before we moved on, that you had a chance to.
Thank you for putting this together. It's super helpful.
Yeah. I said a couple of questions if we could.
Sorry.
Just one question, it won't take long. Alright, so, so you separated this into permitted uses and special uses and, and we're familiar with this, so a offsite wine tasting room could go into a commercial or a our V just, in other words, on seventy-two somewhere, that would be a tasting room that is not contact, not part of a vineyard. I mean, this is just a standalone building that is tasting. Is that, is that the thinking there?
Um, hold on.
Wouldn't it be attached to the farms?
Well, I mean, I get the idea of the, the winery and agricultural property and having a vineyard and, and then a tasting room. But then it looks like we're talking about an offsite tasting room.
I think what we're trying, like if it wasn't direct connected to my building, maybe we need to, I try to look at other ordinance to pull from because obviously I'm not, I don't word things this properly, but if not connected to it, like not on the building that we have itself, but if there was like this little building served to or like this, but they're on our farm, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, we're not looking to like, no, yeah, on our site, on our farm, on our property. Yes.
But the special use permit that you list there shows an offsite one.
Oh, okay, I can work on.
Into commercial, which I guess.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I don't know, there's opposition about that. I'm just trying to distinguish between an agricultural operation with the vineyard and processing and.
I think I, when I was looking at the other permits that I was, or the other ordinance, I need to look at that a little bit better. So I'll work on adjusting it so it makes more sense to what we're looking to do, but.
Thank you for your work here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good, good start.
Want to give, do you have a chance, did you have anything you wanted to say about this, Deb? All right. Thank you very much. We'll stick around, we're gonna talk a little bit about this again in another part. Okay, so Randy, you were talking already a little bit about master plan adoption, but.
I covered that. I, well, there is a question about numbers of copies. How many printed copies we should be making of this, this document? You know, it'll be posted online, of course, and most people would probably want to download it rather than getting a hard copy, but some people might want.
Something that we should have here if people want them. Could have hard copies.
I think there should be some.
Right, but I mean, the public, if they want to.
What about the having the ability to take a copy?
Yeah, that's.
I think we have in our fee schedule a, a charge for that. You know, so if they wanted a bound hard copy, I mean, that's gonna cost probably fifty bucks probably with the cost of color copies.
So that's not something that we would.
No, I just wanted to get an idea of what, how many, how many we should print up this.
Definitely one for each one of the members.
It was one of them, every person of the member.
I would suggest too that maybe we should have each one for any previous board member that worked on it. That they should have a copy of it also.
Should the board itself have their own copy too?
Yeah. Okay.
Sounds like you need about thirty, forty copies.
Well, you know, each board member's gonna need one, the commission needs one, and then I think anybody that worked on it should have one.
It'd be nice to have a couple here too, that somebody did want to buy one, we have one to sell them.
Probably thirty.
Sounds about right to me.
Okay. All right, we'll try to get some economical cost on that and get those printed.
So, no nets.
So the final approval has been given, the effective date was last Wednesday. And we have large zoning maps that don't have the draft stamp on it printed. Now, we're just waiting for signatures from well, Linda Slope Spie has already signed it and I think Wendy will sign it tomorrow or Friday. With the clerk and the supervisor attesting that this is the accurate one. And then we have also a list on there to put future amendments so that we're sure that we're looking at the most recent zoning map. So there is some work to do on the website to take down some of the earlier material. We put all the drafts and things on there. We'll take that down, replace it with the new one. And just as soon as we finish with that, there'll be updates to make and I know we've already talked about a few things, so it keeps moving forward, but it's much better than what we had.
Thanks for all your work on that.
Yeah. Is it, is it possible to get a copy, a printed copy?
Sure. Yeah, that's just black and white. That can be printed here in the office. So it's about a hundred and seventy pages, I think.
Yeah, that's why you didn't print it at home.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be printing those too as well.
Each member here should have one. Of course, the board wants something, and I'm sure Deb's already has one. She's got three of them, yeah.
So we're, we're gonna be making, well, we have the thirty-six by sixty large printed ones. Thirty-six is as wide as you can go with a plotter or most like Traverse Repo. So that's as wide as we can get it so that you can see as much detail as possible. But we can also print eleven by seventeens of that, that somebody might want, who could have in there, you know. I mean, obviously a dollar or two to print those is.
I think we should each have one of eleven, but steens, and I would like to see one big one up on the wall. I think we already talked about that, right?
We did, yep.
That's something that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, after we get the signatures on there, I'm gonna have the documents, have the map scanned so that we'll have it electronically then and we can print our own. It'll be just like digital picture then, but we have to get the signatures first and then we can scan the signed map. And then we won't have any question about what the zoning map, the current zoning map is.
Questions? All right. Association of Planning map membership.
Denise was nice enough to get that all set up for us and so everyone should be getting their magazines here in the future. Is that right?
Down their number, PC one, two, three, four, so as, as we rotate in and out, it'll always go to PC ones where we either email, they email every other month. And then the hard copies, I put down the township hall address, so we, when we come from the D, pick them up. So that way, it, it just puts down on all the changes that occurred when people come and go. But that, I, that was just the simplest way I can be real.
And I know that everyone probably just, we just signed up like a couple of weeks ago, right? So.
Yeah. Subscription price then, that starts.
So I passed out a copy of an article that's in the current Michigan Planning Magazine. That's actually written by our township attorney, so I provided that for educational purposes. Yeah, I, I'm, I didn't think it was a problem with that since we just joined, but, but that's Chris Patterson writing an article about special use permits.
It's always like, uh, all the attorneys have their blogs and they have sort of free articles on the website if you want to. So I'm with what they're saying, you know.
Denise, Denise, can you check and see if your mic is on?
You know, I might not have turned it on.
Is it that, is that better?
Now it's on, thank you.
Oh darn. Okay, yes.
Been saying amazing things.
You have to have the microphone in front of your mouth.
Yeah, I know.
If it's on to the side, it, it up.
All right, gotcha Carol. Okay, Carol, is this better?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
All right, moving on to planner RFQ responses.
So you remember we sent the RFQ out for planners. We sent that to, I think, seven or eight different firms. The deadline to submit was today and we have three responses from three different firms giving us what we asked for, their experience, their hourly rates, and so that will be a discussion item at the township board meeting on Monday on how to proceed with selecting someone to continue with the zoning work that we need. There's I'm pleased with the firms that responded. They're all three very, very well-known companies that do a lot of planning and zoning work around Michigan. So some of them responded that they're just too busy these days. It's, it's a good time to be a planning consultant, actually, but. So do you have any thoughts on how to, what you'd like to see? I guess I, we.
I'll just give you my opinion. I, I think that we can I totally trust Randy as far as picking somebody that's gonna work for us. I don't think we need to interview or, or do any of that, so, but that's just my opinion.
I, I wouldn't think so. I, I think I trust Randy's judgment and he could recommend somebody to us and that'd be great with that.
That's my same thought.
Yeah.
Well, the town board will, will weigh in on that as well, since they, they're signing the contract, so.
But you can represent us.
Yeah, well, I just, yeah, I don't know if, you know, I mean, two of the firms are downstate, one's local. So it's unlikely that, I mean, we could ask for interviews, but that's a little, you know, ask them to come up, right? You know, and then our other issue is working with them to be able to work with, if we choose a firm from downstate, you'll be able to do that remotely with Zoom or whatever mechanism. I, I think we can do that. I'd like to, personally, I think that's you know, and there's a lot of cost involved in travel, you know, we hate to, hate to have people charging a lot of money to sit in the car and driving up by seventy-five when I'd rather have them with their head in the zoning ordinance fixing it.
I have a question for Randy. To get somebody on Zoom would work great. Is our equipment is our equipment okay? Do we need to update it so that, that we don't have lose them or that we can have a view where we can talk to them as well? Do we need to update some of our equipment?
Think we can do it, I guess. I've not, I've done the Zoom a little bit, but not, not with great success actually, but.
I have some ideas with that, that we could talk about later as far as.
Like a, like a TV screen.
IT, well, definitely, I think the person's gonna need to be up here so that everybody can see them here. You know, whether we do.
Used to be something Keith called go, go to meeting. Have you probably been?
Yeah.
Then is that something like that we could use? Something with that quality?
A lot of options there, so.
Okay.
I don't think that personally, I don't like the idea of having them work off of this soon. We already have enough problems with it as it is.
Yeah.
But I think there's some things we can figure out.
Would they be at every meeting? Are, are the planning commission meetings or as needed?
Probably as needed, but I guess that's to be determined. I mean, if we're working through things, I, I would hope that they would prepare something, offer, you know, a draft, be available to answer questions about the draft. You know, and then make edits, come back with, like, like we do now, or like we have been doing. You know, and, and, and here, you, you know, they need feedback on, on what, what works here and what doesn't work here. I don't wanna, I mean, they'll start with a a template or something that is similar to what we need, but then we're gonna have to get into the weeds and dissect the words and.
You know, it's nice about having them, if we had something like, I'll use that go to meeting, you know, because I'm familiar with it, works great. But to have them here at every meeting, they can just listen to our dialogue and if there's, but the minute, how many times have we stopped and asked Randy, we for his opinion because we didn't know, would be nice to have that person right there that we could ask and then discuss it and then we've got that settled and we can move on.
There's a lot of other options where we can just have them on a speaker phone too. You know, you can buy those things, you can send right in the middle, he can hear us, we can hear them. So there's a lot of other options, but we can get into that.
And maybe there are separate work sessions too, independent of the planning commission meeting, that could be set up, that would be sitting on a table, trying to hammer this out.
Okay. All right, we'll wait, we'll wait to hear from you.
The, the meeting's Monday, so we have the responses and like, I haven't looked at them much myself. They just came in. We're trying to get it timed so we can get to this meeting and the township board meeting and then we'll. So.
Were you going to bring up the, the MEDC rep?
Thought that was on here.
No.
I'll bring it up and, and open comments.
Okay.
Anything else on that, Randy? Move on to projects. I'll just like to just talk a little bit about the ROS committee. I think it's important to get that going. Get it set up and then use that for everything that we need to work. So as we find things to do, like especially, and Reen has a nice questionnaire, as we need questionnaires for things, as we need answers, questions, the, the farm winery, something we can put to them. So make it just short is I think that we should get this set up as soon as possible. I asked Reen if she'd be interested in. They asked Reen if she'd be interested in sharing that. She said she would.
Can I ask?
It sounds like it'll be more than just short-term rental.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is, is there one committee or, or multiple committees?
Yeah, that, it, do you want just one committee at a time?
No, I'm, I'm thinking the ROS can handle whatever. You know, what, as it comes through, it just goes to the ROS. I don't think we can find enough people to have different multiple committees and. On each different thing. Unless I'm wrong, but I think the way it worked out last night was good.
Yeah.
One committee and.
I agree with you and that, and that's, that's a, that becomes a team of people who are working together.
Right.
And as you move from issue to issue. So can that.
Right.
So again, the, the, the original thought with the ROS committee was that. The planning commission is allowed by the planning statute to create committees. That are not necessarily only planning commission members and so we reached out to non-planning commission members. You know, to help with the, the conversation about how to do the community survey, the workshops we had, how to organize that, how we should, you know, so that's how. How that all came about. So the committee, ROS, whatever you wanna call it, could be. Many more people than just planning commission members.
Well, that's what we plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Just like we did last time.
At least one planning commissioner on it.
Right.
I think we have two ROS members here.
What's that?
One planning commission member besides me or?
No. At least one, but you can't have more than two because.
Right.
And it's a, yeah, yeah.
So does anybody have, um, anybody that has interest in the ROS committee?
If she's gonna.
If I'm, no, I'm talking about not on the, I'm sorry. Not in the commission, but. Has, has anybody talked to anybody about in the public that wants to?
Um, I have not yet. If. If you're gonna focus on. Short-term rentals, I. I was thinking just one group at a time, but I'd like to have it set up so like for short-term rentals, have people, like two people that are for it. And two people that are against it or something and then maybe one or two people that. You know, that. With regulation. So it's not just all. You know, someone who doesn't want short-term rentals and so they're gonna have a very narrow focus on, you know, what's gonna be allowed. That, that kind of thing. I'd like it to be a little bit expanded to.
We can still do that, I think, with, uh, one committee.
Yeah. With the right, if, if you have to select them, but then anybody can come to the public and be a public person to comment on, on their, okay.
So, um, I guess with this next month. Um, let's try to have enough people for a committee next meeting that we can discuss and inform it.
Okay.
And we have a gentleman that emailed us. Would you like to reach out to him, Reen?
Yeah, that's why I was, I was just looking for. Yeah, I was just looking for that. It's printed on the back of one of the.
If anybody has, anybody talking back up there, maybe. Well, that's, that's, I think, the good part of this.
That's a great start.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe we could have a sign-up sheet. Uh, we could start it tonight and have it there for the Township Board Meeting, people that might be interested in, uh, serving in on, on the ROS.
Resident Outreach Subcommittee.
Yep. Yeah. So.
So that now, uh, to form that. I guess my thought would be to format next.
Well, you know, we may wanna also wait till after the joint meeting with the town board to make sure that we're. I mean, that's just. I mean, I think we'd like to do that, meet our joint meeting next thirty to sixty days.
Right.
I mean, that's not something that's long-term. It's soon, so we're launching correctly.
Right. I think no matter what, we're gonna need an ROS committee. How we, how, uh, we use that committee, I think that the, the board would help direct us with that. Uh, but I don't wanna wait two months for. To try to get that set up. I think we need to set it up now.
Yeah.
Anybody disagree with that?
No, no, I, I completely agree. I'm a little concerned about what, what you brought up Denise in, in terms of, I mean, so if you're talking to somebody, you need to find out what their feelings are. On it to begin with. I, it doesn't seem quite.
I think just that you have, that they have to be able to say that they will be impartial. And you're chair of it, so you could, you know, make sure that everybody is impartial.
Okay.
I, I kinda like Randy's idea about getting some input from the board and. If the. Deb, did these people leave their names with the board? Do we have a list of people we could get a hold of?
I, I know also that.
It might take a little bit of time to like get all these people on board. You know, everybody has a schedule.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that for us. Um, as a commission, inform the ROS committee and then start putting people in it.
Okay.
And. I mean, it can begin with as simple as, you know, me reaching out to people and finding out how serious their. You know, their, um, commitment is to it and before actually forming the committee and, and then. Having that kind of in my pocket for, after we have the joint meeting. That we'd be able to get it running quickly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It, it might take a little bit of time to get it all put together, but to get started on, okay, I agree with that, yes.
Yeah, and then the number of. It, it should be an odd number, so would we have six community members?
We can have at least six. I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, that would be great. And then the time of the meeting sometimes makes a difference on who can participate.
Will be at least once a month.
Yeah.
Possibly twice and sometimes.
I mean, that's, I mean, people call me and I just wanna be able to say what kind of time committed or.
Yes.
If you'd like, you could refer them to me.
I can do that.
Yes, please do.
And it would be here at the Township Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
So everybody okay with that? Kind of our plan forward is. Start working on people. Okay. Anybody have any other questions or comments about the ROS committee? Until next month?
Yeah, just, we'll start with one topic at a time. Not gonna do multiple topics that. Cause we'll do consecutive.
We're just trying to form the committee first.
Okay.
And then how will the committee will operate will be based on what we hear from. You know, the Township Board and what their priorities are is what they would like to give them first. We're just building the structure, right?
Okay.
That make sense? Uh, definitions?
I, um. Well, they're in the packet. I did, I, I, the one setup, we, uh, pertain to signs, short-term rentals and private roads. Our township has nine pages of definitions and, uh, East Bay has sixty-four. Just to give you a range of definitions and the number of definitions. I know we're not as populated as East Bay, but. We need to be forward-thinking and, and we have the, we have the ability now with. Not yet with development coming in, that we can choose how, you know, what our community will look like and we've gotten information from the master plan. You know, everyone wants, you know, rural character and whatever, but, um, that way we don't have to start. But we don't have to start from scratch, so. Um, I put him in, I put this, the definitions from, uh, three townships. I have. Milton and, um, East Bay. And Acme and, yeah, as the, the ones, the surrounding townships, so. Kinda give you an, an idea of what we're looking at or what to look for. But with definitions are nothing without the, the ordinances that they also relate to, so. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave that up at this point. I'm just gonna leave it there, so. I, unless you want, if, if anybody wants all the definitions from other townships. I, I have them and I can make you copies of them and just give you a hard copy if you want them to look through.
I guess.
I was just gonna say on the back of the handout that I gave you, which is the short-term rental survey on one side, it's, I have the definition of bed and breakfast. From our ordinance on the other side, if you wanna compare it, because the, the ones, the ones that are in the, you know, from. From the other townships are actually not as, um, well-defined as ours is, I think. I was just, I was just curious why you selected bed and breakfast. Was it just as an example?
Well, I, well, there's categories. For, is this a survey for short-term rental? Okay.
But just ignore that. If you look at the other side, that's, that's our current definition of a bed and breakfast.
I, I put ours, what I did is I put whitewater townships and it's written and then you can. You, you'll see what ours is and look at ours and then compare what other people have for their, their definition. And see if you like whitewater townships, that's great, but if, just for comparison purposes. Because. It, you know, um, short-term rentals.
This has nothing to do with short-term rental. I just have it on there because I, because, you know, we don't have a definition for a short-term rental in our, in our definitions right now. But, but just because I don't have the, this is the only, you know, way that I can see our current.
Oh.
Bed and breakfast definition to compare it to the ones that you pulled.
Okay, I think, um, well, whitewater townships should have been in there as well.
Oh, okay.
There's a real good definition for bed and breakfast on, uh, the, on, uh, Michigan-complied law. They have a. It, 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 there's a lot of ours is in there and then they go a little bit further concerning some food, but it's. And that one was done by the legislature, so if we ever had to defend it for some reason, wouldn't be any problem. That's a.
Right.
That's a no-brainer and it, and it's followed, we've, we've already followed it for the most part. There's just a few other couple of things.
I'd like to make a suggestion, uh, just to move this along. Let's for next month be prepared to look at definitions that we have. Do we keep them? Do we change them? And get that done. And then the next month we'll look at which ones we wanna add to that.
Process for changing a definition?
It's just a zoning amendment, just like anything else.
It is zoning.
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I guess I would suggest also that we consider the fact that we know that there's a couple of hot-button issues out there. I know. Deb has talked about the side yard setback, for example, is that measured from the building or is that measured from the eve? You know, so that's a change to the definition we should make, where we can clarify that, maybe even do a graphic in there to show that. I know the other examples you have have some good graphics in it. That's much better than having a paragraph trying to describe what a side yard setback is. Um, the other issue is, uh, related to frontage. Um, and front yard setback. That's, that's always a tricky one because it's not, it's not as clear as you might think it is. And we, and ours, I think, needs some work. So there's a couple of areas that we know right now are, are problematic and so we can go into the, look at our definition and see where it's used in the ordinance. Cause sometimes you'll see, um, the word, uh, frontage and lot width used interchangeably. In, in ordinance and they shouldn't be. They're two different things. So we should look at the ordinance and unpack that and see if those, and just, we can search it now. We couldn't before. You know, cause it was a bunch of separate PDFs, um, and now it can be searched, so.
So you're saying you want us to take the whitewater township definitions and just look through them and say, I like this without any comparison to other?
No, what I'm saying is that I wanna look at our definitions, the ones we have right now. And then your suggestions. And then we'll discuss them and. Either change it to what we wanna, we think it needs to be or that whatever we can agree on. And, and move forward. So, and you know, whether we get five done, whether we get ten done, at least we're getting some done. So I'm thinking, let's start with what we already have and what we need to fix. And, uh, once we get that done, then we can move forward on. The definitions we don't have. That make sense?
I, I have a couple in my head that I know in going through the ordinance, I said, that's a, that's an issue. We should, we need to come back to that. You know, but, but there were. And, and Deb probably has a pile of.
Yeah. Yeah, and maybe that's what we start with is the ones that are, that are. An issue, right, right now.
Deb and Randy, could you get us a list of the ones that are problematic?
Of the Denise a couple of weeks ago, everything I brought to the board last October.
October, okay. That was before my new computer.
You still have that? You sent it to me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and we'll get started with, uh, definitions next month then. The definitions that are already listed.
I'll send you my list. There's probably overlap between mine and Deb's.
And then, uh. I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of it and. Okay.
Yeah.
Is that right with everybody?
Yeah, does, does anybody need a copy?
I'm not. Uh, there's something there just bothers me.
What's that?
Well, we've been talked about. Definitions for years that I've been here. There, there are some, I think, we've gone through a lot of them and, and directed them to be the same as the state of Michigan. Uh, we don't have the same. Ordinances as other townships. Some we do, some we don't. We don't have the same definitions and there's no reason to. If our township is different. So I don't know what in the world you're really proposing. We've got, what, how many pages of definitions? I don't, we've got pages and pages of definitions. So what are we talking about? All of them or, or just a few?
Well, first we're talking about the problematic.
Like what are, which ones are they?
They're gonna email us the list.
I just described two of them.
Well, are they? Okay, we need to know why they're problematic. What, just because they don't agree with somebody else's, they should have given it to state.
No, these are problematic, I think.
I don't.
Cause it's not clear.
It, it's a problematic for our zoning administrator because it's not clear enough for her.
I will, okay, if it's a problem for somebody.
Yeah.
You're fine, but I don't feel like going through pages and pages of definitions just for the heck of it. Um, just the ones that are problematic. Yes.
Right, I do believe that we.
We all know which ones were.
We are gonna start with problematic.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, signs. We worked on the signs. Carol, this?
I haven't got a clue of what to do. I've. I know we have signed ordinances. I've looked at them all. I went on the web to the state of Michigan and. Tried to get their sign. But, uh, all I got was to a web slate that said I could get a. Copy to, uh, with digital, put on the computer for fifty bucks or a hard copy for seventy. Eighty, eighty dollars. I'm not gonna sit there and go through hundreds of definitions comparing them to each other. That's a waste of time. I don't know, no, I do, why would we do, what's the problem with our, our size? There's a. One of our sign. Re- ordinances. Uh, has a problem. We should address that.
You, but you talk to Deb, she could probably explain to you exactly what the problems are. Also, I think the best start would be to look at the neighboring townships and their sign ordinances. And then, and then talk to Deb about what our ordinance, what the issues are with it.
Oh, if there are issues, yeah, I. You know, I've looked at the other townships for. The farm ordinance had nusium and nobody here wants to do anything about ours, so.
I think, I think meeting with Deb would probably give you a good starting place. She's, I, I think you, I think meeting with Deb would give you a good starting place because, um, because she's, she's running into issues with the sign ordinance and so.
Okay, okay. So let me know which ones there's a problem with and. I will look into the other townships. I, I tried to get, look at some of the state ones and got absolutely. All I got was the. One website with all of them, but. On other issues, I've been able to get the individual ordinances on the, from the state, you know, on campgrounds and some other things I've looked into. So I just ran into a wall on that one.
Well, just to be clear, uh, this, the sign ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Deb. But, um, all we're trying to do. But um, all we're trying to do is, is fix a problem that we have with our sign.
Okay, but which ones?
I'd like to make a comment. I think Carl brought up a very good point. This is our township and for us to always be looking at the neighboring township for what they do, that doesn't always fit us. This is our township, they should be our ordinances and we shouldn't be copying everybody, sticking and, you know, paste and sticking other people's stuff. I know a lot of people in this community that do not want to be like the other townships around us. We need to keep that in mind.
And I, I don't think we're suggesting copying it. I'm just suggesting that we look at it.
It, but it's a, it's a recurring theme. I've been here longer than any of you. This is a recurring theme all the time. Instead of working on what works for us, we're always looking at the neighbors and a lot of times we take something but they had. It, it doesn't, that doesn't really always work for us. And Carl, Carl brought the point up, I just want to reinforce it.
Understand.
Let me know which ones you're having an issue with and we'll go from there.
All right, we'll, I think.
Excuse me, just while we're rehashing things, let me one more time say that the sign ordinance is subject to the Reed Gil versus Gilbert Supreme Court case, which makes it more difficult to regulate signage. You can't, the way we call signs i- is not appropriate anymore. You can't describe signs by the, by implying what the content is because that's a limitation on free speech. And so that's gonna be a problem in doing the sign ordinance changes. We can maybe make some changes on the edges, but you know, we're gonna find ourselves in court and lose real quick.
I think if we can just fix what Deb has issues with, maybe that would be a great start.
Getting in compliant with the state requirements is a big thing, just like Randy stated, that state example.
Short term rentals, I think.
Yeah, I mean, this is sort of moot, but I, I just kind of started playing around with some survey questions. To get more clarification on where our, our citizens would like to see short term rentals go. And so I'm, I'm definitely open to feedback on this. I'm trying to present something that's, that's unbiased, but will get us the data that we need.
The Supreme Court, for the duration, what, how did they define the short term rental? And Michigan Supreme Court, they give a copy that to key was twenty eight days or less. So if you're trying to figure what, what do we want, what, what, what designates a short term rental, that's what they said. Now, we could, we could make it different if we wanted to, I guess, but court, that would be a pretty good one to rely on.
Exactly, and that's, that's the other thing about looking at other examples of ordinances is things that have been tested in court. You know, I mean.
Complying with state law is, should be our first and foremost.
But even beyond that, things, things that are tested, because the, because the, the court is actually not in agreement with what the the, the state government is talking about doing in terms of regulating short term rentals. They've actually decided that they don't favor them. The, the state court doesn't favor short term rentals. So anyways, but the, the, on the other, the other side of that paper, I was, because it seemed to me like a bed and breakfast is a great place to start in terms of looking at our regulation of bed and breakfast. And so I just started with the definition. And, and I feel like a, a big gap in our definitions right now is that we don't have a definition of a short term rental, even though they're not allowed. So how do you know whether you're running a short term rental if we haven't defined it yet? We've said that they're not allowed. So, so I think that's something that we need to, to add, but it's all part of you know, so I've just taken, you know, this is just an example of what a definition might look like and how it differs from a bed and breakfast. But we have some fairly strict regulation on bed and breakfast. They have to have their septic systems review, you know, tested. There's, there's a lot of things that are already in place in the zoning ordinance for a bed and breakfast that could apply just as easily or perhaps should apply, you know, depending on your point of view to a short term rental. So this is just kind of a starting point because I feel like we definitely need more information from, you know, the residents.
I mentioned before, with the ROS committee, this is perfect. That, you know, something to start them off with, once we get to that point. Because we will have to probably do a, a survey and we'll see what the board says, you know. I, I gotta believe that they might, would have some comment on that or not. But, yeah, this is perfect for, for the committee to start, yeah, for them to have something to start with.
I think breaking it down by zoning districts is helpful too, rather than just looking at for the whole township and saying, because that's we're a very diverse township.
You mean the dip, yeah, you, that's what you did with R one, two, and ag and commercial and all that. Yeah. The other part of it is, is in the definitions of short term rental, they have broken that down into tourist home, which is one that's kind of occupied. Low, they have anything as low density tourist home, high density. Vacation home is where the person rents out the whole house and is not on the premises. So there's a lot of definitions to look into just in short term rentals. And if you want to look at Traverse City's short term rental definitions, they, they have quite a different groupings of definitions, so maybe look at.
For the ROS committee to.
Yes.
I think thirteen and two.
Yeah, they could, because it's really amazing. All, all of the differences, so that I'll just end there, so.
All right, so anything else, any other questions on that? I'm kind of, you know, be on hold on a lot of these here until the ROS committees formed. But keep thinking for each one of these items, what we're gonna give to the ROS. Whether it be researcher or whatever. We have a good start, I think, on, being the private roads is next. We have a good start on that. That will give them something to start with. Go after that. I think once the, the committee is formed, next month, we can talk about priorities. We can set our priorities and then when we meet with a joint meeting, you can see how they align with theirs. That sound good, Randy?
Did you want to talk about private road ordinances just briefly?
I was asked to put a list together of things that we thought we should look at. This is just my own personal view, but it seems to me like we should look at the ordinance that was deleted and, and try to realize what was wrong about it, what didn't work here. And that seems important. Three other ordinances were rewritten after that one was deleted, gotten rid of, deleted. And they were all turned down, so those would be good starting points, I think, for us to work on our own private road ordinance. I mentioned that Al has put together a his own version of one. I think, I think it'd be good for us to look at that. I think we should involve, we have a large community, we have a large part of our community that already live on private roads. And I think we should include those people. Either we do a mailer or somehow contact those people and let them know when we are addressing this subject and get them involved. I can tell you from the past, this can be a hot topic issue and it's more transparent we can be, the better off we're gonna be. So involving those people and letting them know that we're, this is what we're working on would be in our best interest, in my opinion.
Would something like this, so a mailer, maybe would be something important on that also?
I would think, yes.
So that's because that's one thing we'll want to make a list for the ROS of which mailers will be needing.
And I, I, I feel like we talked about this at the last meeting, but maybe I just dreamt that, that the private roads that are in existence would be grandfathered.
I, I think we should. Right, that, that could quell a lot of, of, of prop, you know, of, of potential problems from people feeling like that they're being run over.
I think that'd be a must for a couple, legally, legally. It'd be a must that we can change order and say, now you have to go do this. This would be grandfathered in and this would be going, this one would be going forward from there.
And, and that basically was my next, that was number five.
And I personally think they ought to be grandfathered. I don't think, or, I mean.
I think somebody pointed out at the last meeting. One person's private road is another person's driveway. How long is it? What is the definition?
And the, the last thing I wanted to mention was, is I understand ordinances, the board should pass this ordinance as a general ordinance. Because I understand how, how the ordinance work. And I might be wrong about that, but that's how I understand it.
I think you're right because the board is the one that turned down these ordinances.
But you mean that it's not a zoning ordinance?
Thanks for putting a list together.
It's just off the top of my head, it's if anybody's got anything else, I'm, I'm more than willing to hear about it.
That goes right into what I wanted to talk about under other. For each one of these, we should have a list of priorities. And what you have right there is, is a perfect start. But I, I would like to see us be able to give Rain for the committee just a one pager of a list of priorities for each project. So for instance, private roads, these are the things that you should consider. Look at this, look at that, or whatever it may be. And that, and I think right now we're just talking about short term rental, private roads.
Signs. And signs.
I think if we're just looking into making it making it legal. I don't know if we need to, I think it's like maybe something we can do.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the science thing is gonna be a little simpler. We're just trying to get ourselves legal.
And these are two pretty big things we're gonna throw at. Let's not scare her off right away.
I'm not feeling very well.
I, I would, I'm gonna add one more thing to that, though. We've already discussed it. It's just hasn't been put right together, but farm wine thing. So we've got a good start on the fire, the farm wineries. So if we can get a list of priorities of those three things, your ideas and that, we'll throw it all together. And then we can hand that to Rain, so she has good idea where, where we're going.
And, and then, yeah, and, and then the names of people are that would be interested in those particular topics like agro tourism, the wine tasting room. There are other businesses that are interested, or farmers that are interested in that as well, have them notified so that they can be informed in, you know, helping form an ordinance. I don't know.
Well, you know, the, I, I believe the committee, the ROS committee can have anybody come in and talk. So, you know, once we get that formed, you know, they want to talk about specific things, I could have you know, all firms going to talk if they want. So that'll be their decision on, on how that works and. That's, all right, so anything, anything else on that? And those, project items? Can we move on?
Oh, wait, I just hit a quick question of, so Al, the, the, the thing that you created, the, the, is that based on these past? On the old ordinances?
No, no, not at all. This, where this came from. In twenty-three, Ron Pop said, we, we really needed a road ordinance, what it worked on, well, I tore into it. I come up with a hundred and eight pages and brought it into him, he said, no. He said, you gotta make it, you gotta make it simpler. So this here is, was what the byproduct that was, came up with eighteen pages. And like the radius and things like that, where, where some, where some of this came from was Grand Traverse County's road commissions. Old road or old road or, it's they, they've changed to a different system there. And then some of them actually came, there's a, I think it was Ottawa County down in Holland. And then I just looked at some different ones and looked like, because just like Mike was saying. We gotta remember we're a rural community. So some of the things that you might want to put on a road ordinance don't apply. We don't have that, that heavy traffic. And then in the back of it too, we had a section in there where it specifically stated that it is, this is not retroactive and there is a grandfather clause. And then I went to the state legislature and got their definition of grandfather clause and then put that in there too. So there's no doubt about that. If they're grandfathered in, and this is what we mean by grandfathered, then another, another planning commission can't go back and say, okay, we want everybody to do this to the driveways because this would say, no, you, you can, you don't have authority to do that.
So then what happened? It just, nothing?
I took it in and then the board just lost interest. I think Kim, Kim would tell you that, I think we had three, actually three road ordinances that we tried to get through. And they died. Life support just died. So.
The other thing I'd add to this is that we have some engineering.
We have an all new board.
We have some engineering support now that we didn't have before that would be helpful. Because as you look through what Al has and some of the prior versions, about half of it's engineering concerns about you know, road geometry and, and materials and, you know, we haven't even got to the idea of a paved road, you know, and drainage and all that stuff. You know, that is, should be in the requirements. And my, my focus is on new construction of roads. I'm concerned that somebody could put a two track in and call it a private road and be done. And it's not gonna maybe support emergency vehicles. So we gotta, I think our residents deserve some kind of basic regulations. Instead of a developer is gonna build a private road, it's gonna be built to some standard. And I'm, I'm not personally concerned about existing roads. I mean, I think that's the concern is the, is the new ones. They might be proposed tomorrow. I mean, somebody could walk into Deb's office tomorrow with a set of plans, drop it on her desk and say this needs to be approved and we don't have any ordinance to compare it to. That's why this is on the list.
Okay, so those will be your, your three. The ROS. You could maybe get a copy of what you have to read.
I handed a copy to everybody. Those hand, the chicken scratching.
And then Al had, we have Al's as well, so.
All right, okay, move on. Gonna bypass the budget discussion unless anybody has anything. I don't have anything more. Waiting on the township.
Did, did you, did we plan the budget for an ROS like for a year, the, the whole year?
Information on that yet. I'm trying to get a meeting with Tim.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, new business. Thank you for patiently waiting. AS Construction Expansion Project.
I will try to be brief. I'm Craig Johnson with AIS. Up the road, if you're familiar with us. So I'll explain to you what we want to do and why. And the why is we basically outgrown, we have two parcels. Part of one parcel is zone residential to the south of us. We owned a crisp road. We, we've outgrown it. We, we have more business, more equipment than we can deal with on this property. But what's kind of moving it along is we finally were able to work a partnership out with Northwest, Northwest Education District, which is the old T base is what they used to be called, or, you know, it's the school district here. You know, it's, it's, it's sixteen public schools plus some privates. And we do this all over. Um, and we do this all over the state, we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, but now we're gonna partner with them in this next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six to do, um. Heavy equipment, industrial maintenance technologies, which is Votek for high school juniors and seniors. In diesel mechanics and we've been doing this for a long time, but now we're gonna be working up here. And so we wanna take one of our buildings, which is a co-building. We wanna update it, we wanna add to it and add a classroom because we wanna keep the students a little bit away from the rest of our operation. And then that's, we're gonna also then need to gonna build a, build another building for storage. Because we won't have that building, so there's two things we wanna do. And the, this kid's coming is really what's driving it and we've been working for about five years to try to get them. To work with us, um, because they have nothing, nothing for diesel mechanics, they never have. Um, and again, we, we have a training center, we're basically state certified. Um, Heavy Equipment Technical Institute, and we've been doing it, uh, since nineteen ninety-eight. And right now we, this will be the seventh school district. That we'll be working with, we're gonna add Kalamazoo and then Northern Michigan this next school year. So that's the biggest why, but if you come to our property and I invite you to stop by. We have, our business has grown so much over the years, we just have more equipment. And, and, but then we know what, where to put it. Um, and if you look at your aerials, you'll see that. So we wanna, we wanna take that parcel that we own to Chris Road and we would like to rezone that to commercial. Like to take it to Chris Road, but take it as far as the township is comfortable with us taking it to. And we certainly can, uh, you know, and, and Deb and I talked about this, we can certainly build some berms, we can plant trees. We can do some things, we, we have all the equipment there. You know, to make it so that you won't even see A I S anymore for the people that live over there. Um, and we're more than willing to do that, so what I'm trying to, to understand is. Where we would be able to take that to. Before I pay somebody to come survey that line to, uh, that I need to make the application. So that's kinda why I'm here. And if you have questions, you know, I'll answer them, but that's kinda the why. And then what we wanna do is whatever the township is comfortable with, as far to Chris Road as we can. Take the property line and, and change that zoning to commercial. Or industrial. Whatever we need to do to run our business.
I've got the aerial image here, that, if, if that, it just so happens. We have some drone footage.
Was there some concern about, um. Commercial traffic or industrial traffic on Chris Road?
Yeah, there won't be any.
And you're saying that, you know, you can block it out the berms or.
Yeah, we, we, Deb and I talked about that, that road's not built for trucks or heavy equipment and plus it's, you have people that live there. We don't want any traffic, we don't, we don't wanna entrance or exit there, we just need our property to run our business. Um, so we don't wanna go on Chris Road, we'll, like I said, we can build berms, we can plant trees, we can create natural barriers. Um, you know, anything that it takes to, to make everybody happy.
We didn't know you'd be here, we just happened to take pictures about a year ago and that, that shows your.
So this is seventy-two over here, correct? And where, is Chris Road on here at all?
Yeah, no, it's not.
Yeah, yep, to your, to your left or south.
Yes, and where does the, uh, industrial zone go to now, here?
No, it actually goes, I think, past that red building.
The shed, the small red shed, kind of on the. The shed looks like it's on the other side of the. Of the line on, on this map.
It is in your packet there. So I also have the zoning district here too, the zoning map. So the gray area is what's on industrial.
I need someone to point out.
Do you see where you're, see where he's at on that map?
Do you want to come up to the map and?
Seventy-two, right?
Yeah, and there's more.
This is heights, this is Keniko. Keniko, here is where he is sitting. He owns this, it's industrial, he owns. This is industrial, this line, I'm not sure where it came from, but this lot is all. This is another one of those. Dual zones, but this. Here is all R two all the way to Chris. These are home lots here, but they own all the way down to here. And this is agriculture, this is R two. Um, residential, this is part of where he has his craft. You look at the drawing that he included, there's a, they put a lot of their equipment over here so guys can drive through there. And then they've got an area out here where they play with it, test it out. So in order for him to build down here and put the building in the training center that he wants. This is gonna need to be rezoned to. Industrial, some distance down here, the building he wants to put in is sixty by one twenty. So sixty feet wide, hundred twenty down, so the reason he came tonight is because I asked him. Before he goes to see a surveyor, how far down? Is the planning commission willing to let him go? With industrial, if they were to expand this district, because he's gotta come to you with a survey. Recommending, one, to amend this all to. Rest to, from residential A to all industrial. This is vacant industrial right now, but expanding this down and make this more industrial in this area. And then, um, he's gotta do a combination and then he's gonna come in and add. And wanna build this building here, which is gonna require a site for review.
I, I don't, I would easily go to where the industrial already goes to without any problem whatsoever. And if, if he's, he needs more space than that, then we'd like to hear about that. My opinion.
Well, that's not his, that's on his drawing.
Question I have is what is, there's a building right here in the, almost right in the lot line. Is that a residence?
There is a residence out behind us that was built, oh, within the last eight, ten years.
He's looking at a lot that's over.
Yeah, it's like a blue, it looks bluish and the.
No, it's some kind of pole barn or something.
Yeah, the pole barn back there.
Different property though, isn't it?
Yep, that comes in off the Chris.
Is that a residence or just a?
That, that, so I think that's a residence there. Yeah, like I said, that was built maybe within the last eight years, ten year.
Is there a reason why you need to come so far down to Chris? What, what, what will you be doing with? If the, if the building is here, what's happening here?
Well, we're already kinda on it, so we have so much equipment, we can't even fit it on our property today. So, so basically, we, we, if we're gonna do this, we'd like to get as much as we can and get it done now. And not have to come back here and we're already, we're already. We're already over our, our line, if you look at our equipment, we just don't know where to put it, so we, we, we need that room. For equipment storage as well as these buildings, the training, we're gonna have to have parking for these kids when they come. We're gonna have a lot of different things, so. We, we want as much as we can to Chris Road that the township's comfortable with now.
Think like Mike said, I think. This is already here, this was all pipe, right? Isn't that right, um, Al? That's where they laid, that's where they laid that pipe, the, in the ground. That's right here, right?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's where the pipe racks were.
And that's, go back to zoning one now?
That is zone properly as R two, they have a special use that they can store that on there, but it's not an indefinite thing. So it's a temporary storage of that pipe that's laying there, but it's still R two. Behind that property, but they're next to it.
Being that this is already being used for that, I think what Mike is saying that. You know, at least come this far right away is.
I don't see any problem whatsoever with that, I, I, personally, I wouldn't have a problem with him going a little farther, but. Without any doubt, I believe it shouldn't go that far.
Would this be something the neighbors would need to know about?
They'll be notified.
If you go any further, then you're gonna be right next to this residence.
But he, but he has two different lots there, maybe, maybe we could just give him on the east, on the east lot, go a little farther.
There's a line. And then you could use this, like you said, there's a house right here, there's a barn. Yeah, I was thinking for their property is, is leave this here as like a buffer for these homes. And then other than this, I would think they could use that.
What Deb's saying, that line isn't even there, right?
No, it's one of those split lots.
So it is agriculture and. So we, so we could bring both, both parcels down to where the other industrial comes to. And then on the, on the east, the yellow one, the orange one, come farther down. And, uh, just to align, we can agree on and, uh, make this work for them.
How's that sound?
Yeah, I just, I just. But we wanna go as far as we can, and so whatever you are, that we can agree on. But I wanted to know what that was, so when I pay somebody to do a survey, that I have to submit, I at least survey the right line. Right, which is what you've already told me you would be agreeable.
So a couple of things come to my mind and that is, first of all, when you talk about rezoning, you should be also thinking about what does the master plan say? About that, and if you look at page one oh five, it talks about this very issue. It has that very same air photo in here, we didn't know this was coming up, but. But we talk about the fact that there should be no industrial traffic on Chris Road, it's not paved. It's residential for the most part, so any industrial should be north of, of Chris, doesn't say how much, but, but obviously we don't want.
I have it, so, and.
He's saying he doesn't want.
Well, a, a, and. We're willing to build berms, plant trees, make some natural barriers. Facing Chris Road and, you know, and even facing east, you know. For anybody that lives there, they won't even have to see our business.
That's where you might run into a problem with this residence. And then, but if we stay above this residence.
Well, there could be some berm on the west properties.
What, what, we can burn the entire property so that all you'll see is berms and trees, we can do that.
But if we come across at this line, come across the white section here. And then let him come down here, then we really are not approaching on this guy a lot. Right, especially if they put trees or berms or anything.
You know how, how far this is from here to there? Approximately? You know how it is, how far it is across here total?
I don't, I didn't measure that, uh, is it on that, that I gave you was an aerial, is this drawing doesn't have.
And, you know, Mike, tell me if I'm wrong, but. Not, not, it might not necessarily be at this line, it could possibly be over if he's willing to do some berms. And this person here is okay with it.
It's all gonna go before a public hearing, so when you have it. It's reviewed by you, you make a recommendation to the township board and then the township board makes the final decision on. Where that line should be.
But, but keep in mind that there's two action steps here, one is rezoning it. And that's just rezoning it, that's not looking at the site plan. For this yet, the next step after it's rezoned is to get the site plan and then start talking about the Birmingham. I think it's, it's, it's helpful that they're interested in that, but we, we can't, we can't require, um. The Birmingham with the rezoning. So we have to be aware of the two-step process here.
And is this not considered spot zoning because it would be adjacent to existing?
That you're expanding the existing industrial zone.
And, and keep in mind this parcel that he wants to do this on is already partially zoned industrial. So right now the parcel number itself has three different zones in it, it's got industrial, A. Based on this map and R two residential.
So this is an opportunity to make some improvement here to our zone.
Looking at this, I just had a meeting today. And over here we have, um, Ryan Travers Plastics and they are looking at. Rezoning these two lots, because they wanna put a structure in here. So this would be going from commercial and A, even though this is one lot. It's dual zone, but also be, that's gonna be coming before you in the, in the near future, that they would like that to be. Zoned, rezoned to and amended to be industrial as well. Just while you're thinking about it in the bigger scheme of things, because industrial is moving this way. And the only parcel that is developed and zoned is. Industrial is right here, it's in the master plan, it's flat and it's undeveloped. Okay, so we'll get out of here.
The first step should be tough.
Would be the rezoning step to re, to rezone it from whatever it is now, egg and residential to industrial.
Now, would you? We can rezone that to. A certain point.
Right, so I would, you know, I would guess I would leave. Room there for additional residential along Chris and then, and then, and then. We would definitely be requiring substantial buffering between the two. And I don't mean just a three-foot high hill, I mean with, with a pine tree in the top, I mean, I, I mean, something. You, you've got the equipment to do.
Yes, we, we have the equipment to do it. Yeah, we've been good neighbors. For the entire time we've been there.
We wanna help you expand.
We're not there late, we're not there on the weekends typically, so we'll continue to be good neighbors.
Okay, so does everyone sound like lying a couple hundred feet north of Chris?
I, I don't see where you'd have any, uh, entrance off of Chris Road.
No, you don't want one.
I don't think the township wants one and we don't.
To, to your question, Randy, how deep are the housing blocks that are on Chris Road?
They look like about a couple hundred feet, you know.
Now, now remember, we own the Chris Road. And they're never gonna sell that property, so whatever we leave there, they're still gonna own, they're never gonna sell that.
You, you're leasing the property?
No, they own it. Aaron Wall Realty owns it, who are the owners of A I S.
This is the procedural file to do that, I guess I don't know what. Other than that we can.
I think you have some feedback from the planning commission now, so I would.
Well, how many hundred feet north of Chris? Would you suggest, cause what I'm gonna have to do is I'll have to get a survey at that point, just so I can submit it with my.
Cause we need a legal description of what you're rezoning.
Right, just so I, I have to get a survey, pay for a survey at that line to submit with my request, so that's what I was trying to figure out. Where you would be comfortable with it, and if you would tell me how many feet north of Chris Road, you know, that's where we'll survey.
My personal one would just be go along the line of those existing homes as a buffer or a barrier. And then beyond, and then back from that would be usable to me, and let me show you some. My, my thought would be, uh. These are the homes or the lots, let's, let's say they're two hundred feet, we can see what they are, but just extend that over here and. And leave that and then use the rest.
The only, the only issue I see there is this residence.
But he's willing.
He's on the other.
He's willing to burn around.
Yeah.
So that guy doesn't have to look at it.
So we can we can deal with that when we're looking at the site plan.
Right, exactly.
But I.
And there's right now where that residence is. Uh, not very far, because he's right next to our property line. There's been a big berm there, because there's a a place where we test equipment out. You know, we dig and we we, you know, after we work on things, we run it. And there's a big berm right. Right near where that house was built, because that was just built, like I said, in the last eight years. So there's something there right now.
He's he's already dealing with.
You have a comment?
Yes, please. Um.
Yeah.
Kim Angus, fifty-one oh one Brown Bear, and also the owner of all those little parcels along Chris Road.
Yeah.
Directly adjacent. So I didn't know you were here this evening. Um, I don't object to using more of the land, which, like you said, you're already doing. But I would really like to ask in everyone's best interest. That the planning commission sets something up so that you evaluate. The zoning change. Based on a square footage description or measurements. Don't make this gentleman do a survey for something that, once you bring in all the neighbors. You may have. Irate people on your hands and you, if you find you want to move it.
We understand that.
Fifty feet.
Following this here. Um, if you had a comment you wanted to make about. Anything else?
You may find you have a lot of. Community input. And it's really unfair to make him do a survey prior to having some community input and people knowing that this is coming up.
I understand.
Thanks.
Yeah, I guess I'm not clear on um why the survey is your next step.
I I think you require it.
Well, my my issue was is that, and I mentioned this before. Is, you know, we can probably agree on this here, but. You know, I don't know, you know, this residence over here.
Well, I I think. Yeah, I'm no expert at this. But I think reading and talking to Deb, your processes, I have to have the survey done just to submit the application. So I thought I might as well come here. And get an idea where I should survey it. If it changes, it changes and I'll have to pay for another one. Um, but that's why I'm here. I thought whatever we could, what you think would be agreeable, I'll at least. I'll I'll make the call tomorrow and get somebody out to survey it so that I can submit the application, because I think that's how the process works.
Yes, we need some kind of a description of what it is we're rezoning. Right, so we can.
Legal boundaries on it.
So.
Yeah, but if if we have a survey of the existing property. That shows like the the back. Property line of those resid- residences there. Couldn't we couldn't we create a description based on that?
Well.
I I just say, because that.
I can figure that out. I I again, it 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 could change. You go through your public comment. It may very well change and you might say, okay. But I thought I'd at least take a stab at getting it right the first time.
Okay.
Yeah, right? What she was saying was what I was trying to get at along along is we could get you. An idea, but I we can't guarantee that that's gonna end up that way.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand, but I thought rather than me guessing and paying for a survey, I would come here and try to get closer.
So. I guess we would be comfortable talking about, we would be comfortable already for for um.
Well.
Where am I at here now?
You were right down the line.
You're correct.
Um. I just don't know what to do over here. Do we come over? Hundred feet or?
Well, he's saying there's already a berm there.
Right.
So um. Uh, maybe a visit to the site and take a look and see what that neighbor is actually looking at. I mean, maybe he's already. Not, he's just looking at a hill or a berm.
Right.
And it it isn't gonna be an issue. I mean, you you can see their their test place is right over. Close enough to him that if he's got a problem, you'd think he'd already be complaining about it.
Was the berm there before the house? It was. So he built the house. Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I think that's important.
We could just say this whole section here. Down to here.
So.
As a starting.
So so the problem. That I think Deb is alluding to is that those applications for rezoning of a specific site shall be accompanied by a survey that specifies the boundary. And legal description of the site. So our ordinance requires a a survey. So. So that's.
Does it say a survey of? I mean, there must, they must already have a survey of their property.
No, it's a survey. I believe it's a survey of the proposed new property line.
Yeah, so I mean, that's we're kind of. Held hostage to our ordinance here.
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't be much for him to do. He he knows what the other boundaries are. He could run his line over if that is two hundred feet, square it off and. You know, you have your description.
And we could start there and hopefully.
Maybe he could set the pins later or something. I don't know.
Heard out.
Too far now. Half to three quarters. And not just one of the neighbors, but well, I'm five of them.
Back to back to my point, back to my point here. I'm saying that maybe the surveyor wouldn't have to put the pins in the corners or wouldn't have to. So he could just give us a legal description. And then to save some money on that, I don't know. I'm not a surveyor, so I don't know.
Okay.
As long as we had a legal description of what we know, what what is being proposed.
Yeah, in a drawing, you're gonna want a drawing. So in order to make a drawing, he's probably gonna, he's gonna wanna. Survey it anyway, I would think.
Yeah.
Well. How about this as a starting point? Um. Get it surveyed, hopefully, you know, at the cheapest you can. At three quarters of the way down. And that's our third. We can move it from there depending depending on other comment, um, hearing. Things like that, but is that sound right?
What you mean, three quarters? You mean come down three quarters and then go back up, leaving that upper?
I don't know the. Three quarters of the distance of that lot.
Yeah.
Between where industrial park and Chris Road.
This would be about half, you know, it'd be about three quarters.
Okay.
Give us a starting point anyways.
Okay.
So it looks like we were we're even with that.
Yeah, he's already beside that guy.
Yeah, he's already.
Well, but it it there's a ways to get to Chris Road. You don't see it, but there's a lot of land.
Yeah.
He has a long drive.
Yeah.
Yes.
How far from that uh blue, the the home that's right on your property line to Chris Road? Do you know about approximately how far that is?
It's gotta be a thousand feet.
Yeah, it's a very long driveway. I bet it is.
Yeah, I see it on the map. It's great.
Set way off the road.
Yeah.
And you can see as Randy was showing, that was already in the picture. And he's already using that. So that's telling us we did that. That's not gonna give him what he needs.
Right.
I'm inclined to.
Would you go back to that picture?
To go down to here?
Yes, because look where that house is. That's uh.
Yeah.
Over here, right, uh, right there is that that barn dominium.
Yep.
And then when you come across here. Uh, you can see he is, here's his property. His property is right in here, that A I S.
Yes.
And you can see that uh. Uh, they're already to this, let's say pasture line. I think Wayne puts his horses in there. But um. So you can see if he only went. To here, it wouldn't give him enough room to do it.
It's not gonna give him anything more. They're already using.
What about going to to this line?
The one on the left.
Property line.
Yeah.
To the south.
Yeah, right there.
Goodness, huh?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I would.
I think it's a little more.
And then that's still staying a little bit away from the residential that I press. To the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I I would I would go with that.
About how many feet is that? Can we split that?
Oh, yeah. I know.
That looks like five or three hundred feet or so.
Which is. Just eyeball it. It might be a little more than three quarters, but it's it's close.
Right.
Probably more like eighty percent.
Yeah, and you're saying just go, oops. Just say go across here.
As a starting point.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Knowing that might not be where it ends up, that that's where you start.
If you're a surveyor, can give us a legal description, that's what we need. So it's.
Yeah, I'll get that.
It it may not be stakes in the ground. That would say.
Um. That's the document I gave you. Pick that back.
Well, yes.
In your patent, I think.
Yes, it is.
That's changed for the.
Yeah, thank you.
Serving.
Do it.
Everybody keep.
Change on one side that should be cheaper.
I I think, I like you said, I think it's. That, which means very workable meets his needs and.
So we're up from the houses on the right. We're up to that that line right there. Okay, and carry that across. Okay.
Yes.
That's what I'll do.
I think.
And I'll get that done.
Are gonna be the only people, I guess, that would complain. I mean, yeah.
Well.
And we'll have a hearing with that.
He's sitting right here.
Right here. Right here, Carl.
Okay. Well. What are you comfortable with? Is that?
I said half to three quarters. I I'm only half of the ownership of those parcels.
But.
Um.
We're we're just talking about starting point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just hate to see him spend money. When really it's this is something that.
I'd like this. But unfortunately, the process required to submit it with it, so.
Not setting pins, we have.
Yeah.
We're gonna follow the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that's all I'll do. I'll use that. Any more questions for me? I will get a survey done, and we will, then we'll submit.
I guess I would just comment that I think the Birmingham is, like I said, more than a three-foot high. Piece of, in my mind, anyway, it's substantial.
You bend to our place?
I know, I was, I was, I'm challenging you to.
Yeah.
Impress us with.
We might bring material in.
Well, you might, you know.
But.
If you'll get some other work related to this and doing other burns.
I mean, well, and I would ask you, you're sitting here.
You know what? I may have some some brown for you. If 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 Rand Travers Plastics, they're gonna have dirt to get rid of, so.
Oh, there you go.
So.
On the east side. We're uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're good. You ever be, you know them?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Again, just to be clear, this is just a starting point. Through public hearing and. And that's I could need it way. But I guess we don't have much of a choice the way their. Ordinance is written. Okay.
We might need to fix that.
Yes.
Yeah. And that should, yeah, maybe.
Turn that off. Um. So really, you had a private ordinance, ordinance, next steps forward. On board action? Yeah, that was what we talked about. Okay, don't give it that. Um, all right. I don't know, you have some information about the redevelopment, ready communities?
Yes, it was on there.
Yes.
I just wanted some follow or suggested we get some follow-up on that presentation from Dan. Um, you know, there's next steps to take if we want to go further down that road. Um. I did find out, I did talk to Pablo. I think he mentioned that was the gentleman to talk to. It's all been about a half an hour about about this and and. You know, um, and then also he did mention that there is somebody named Hannah who lives in Elk Rapids. Who would also be assistance to us um to understand the kind of development issues we're working with. So I guess. We haven't had any conversations since the. Presentation from Dan. I I was curious as to what the planning commission thought. Is this something we should pursue more? Um, there is. The attractive thing to me is there's money potentially from. From the M E D C to do zoning work or do some other. Planning work and um. So.
Yeah, I I think it's, I think it would be um very important to get them involved with all the stuff that we're talking about doing.
Since we've got some pretty big fish that we're gonna fry, you know, with the short-term rentals, the changes to the. All that sort of stuff.
It likely involves Deb some more too, so so. She knows.
I suppose. We can get some of that. Mental systems right away near that um. Be another big. Something that we just don't really have time for it.
And. Got our plate pretty full, yeah.
Oh, but they but they would help us with it with what's on our.
Yeah, that's what they're there's.
Yeah, it's not something different.
And and there's no fee, there's no.
No cost.
And that's always attractive. So to have free help and advice with somebody.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be a catch. No, it's nothing.
No.
We probably have, you know.
What the M E D C is doing, I mean, if you look at their materials, they're encouraging local governments to get their act together in terms of planning and zoning. That's really what it comes down to. And they're holding out this certification as redevelopment ready to as an incentive. And money along the way, if you need it to help do. Do zoning work or planning work or or whatever. And so one of the things I think that's interesting to them is the whole redevelopment of the village area. In in the in the in the community, because that's a redevelopment kind of concept, and there could be some big potential there.
Yeah. Uh, and we would have to pass a resolution that.
Yes.
We wanted them so to help us.
Yes. So the town board hasn't heard anything about this yet either.
Yeah, they have to approve, bring this up, resolution, make a resolution. And so do we need to do it first? I guess that's the question. Does township board want to know what we want to do? Because they're not gonna tell us, yeah, oh.
Yeah, they're.
You know, I mean, they might, but.
I think they'd want to know if there's something the planning commission wants to pursue and.
Yeah.
It's a long-term proposition. It's it's not. Two weeks and we're done. This is this is years more than likely.
Isn't there a gentleman you were supposed to talk to?
Pablo.
Did you talk to?
I did. Yep. But then he told me about this person named Hannah who's in Elk Rapids. And I said, you know, because I was trying to describe what we have going on here and. You know, the. Just all the development issues and how diverse we are with the seventy-two corridor. Agriculture and our our village area and all that. And so. You know, he was. Encouraging, but he also says this takes a long time to get through these. Some communities have been through this program for three, four years, you know, before they come out the other end. You know, he was encouraging, but he also says this takes a long time to get through these, some communities have been through this program for three, four years, you know, before they come out the other end. With it, so.
I think he, did he space say it was two years for them?
Yeah, and they helped him with their zoning rewrite, which is some of the stuff that you found when you were doing your.
Yeah. So they're they're willing to to help us, but we have to commit to, you know, working with them, they don't wanna say. You know, yeah, I'm gonna help you, and then you go like, I don't have time this month there, I don't have time this month, and you know, then they're wasting their time, they could help another community. So.
And and we have to, gotta remember one thing, we have to have time for them to, I mean, our schedule is pretty full, I mean, we can have the help. And it, but if they're gonna say, well, I need an hour or two hours each meeting, or whatever, we gotta make sure you can supply that.
So.
Understanding is is that, so as we go through these ordinances, things, we can send us. To them and they will look at them, give them their uh opinions and send them back.
Well, um. They they will review our planning and zoning documents and make us and make recommendations to us and where we're where we have shortcomings. And and what we have to do to to improve um and get to higher status.
Kind of what the board had paid to have done before, that they were really at. Was that the uh, when we, when I first started, they had.
Yeah, that that was different, I, well.
Some.
It's kinda the same thing, right?
Some.
But we were paying them.
I know.
So so for instance, with the short term rentals, as we start developing. A direction um and writing the definitions and the ordinances, this is something that they'd be able to help us with, right?
Yep.
I'm I'm definitely on board.
Okay, uh it is, yeah, I think we should, I think it's gonna be a slow moving train, I think, but but I think staying engaged with them. You know, they they have, and when that program first started out, they were trying to maybe make it conditioned on on grant. Applications, you know, that if you wouldn't get MEDC grants unless you were enrolled in the program.
Yeah.
And then they kind of backed off of that, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
You say we did make a motion to bring it to the board?
Um, I think um.
A resolution, uh but.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get the actual resolution to to get to the meeting, but um I can get that for, and just indicate to the board that there's interest. Here and um. See if 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 they would bless it as well, and then we can go ahead and take formal steps. Okay.
So.
Our next meeting is the.
Could you kind of get like a paragraph or of, you know, just what we're committing to 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 do and how they will. The process of how they'll help us if we have a time commitment, um.
So we're committed to some trainings too, that with with them, so that that includes, I think, Deb and maybe uh. Others, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, moving on, uh set dates for joint meeting.
We're looking at dates that we can propose to the township board, um.
Do we have any idea from then?
No, it's just.
Nothing at all.
Are we looking at mornings or evenings or?
For me, it's gonna have to be evening, I guess.
Yeah, and I I think the board meetings are at night, they changed into evening.
Oh, did they?
Okay, yeah. Only for a few months.
It's not a permanent change, but.
Okay, so. Real soon, evening meeting.
Let's see, your next meeting is?
Yeah, the Monday is the, they normally meet the, I guess it's the second Monday.
Um, we wanna try for Sunday, the next two weeks after that. Any day better than others for anybody? It's like last year when we did this, was it? It was laying on Thursday, was it?
I don't remember.
I think it was a Thursday, I don't think it was a Wednesday, it wasn't our meeting day, yeah, it was Thursday.
I don't know why.
So.
Twenty to twenty seventh, they're both open for meeting.
Are you talking um March?
March twenty seventh, Thursdays, I'm just throwing those out there, I don't know why, because.
I'm here with a training class on the twentieth, nineteenth and twentieth, so from six to eight.
I can't make the twentieth either.
And I can't make the twentieth.
What about twenty seven?
That's fine.
Twenty seven.
I think I could do that.
Oh, ZBA.
We won't know that till.
March twenty. I'm gone that week, the twenty fourth.
So that doesn't work.
Good, well, um.
First week of April.
So.
Or April third.
Third works for me.
Um, yeah, that's the our our PC meeting is the second, and so we'd have two meetings, you know, back to back. Okay.
Are we good with that?
I'm okay with the third.
Are you okay with that, Carl?
You make the third, which would be uh.
April third.
April third.
April third for what?
In the evening for a joint meeting.
Oh, joint meeting. When when's our regular?
Ours would be the second, it'll be the next day.
So two, that's not a problem.
And the board is, would be on the fifteenth. The sec, or is it second Tuesday, the eighth?
Second Monday, right?
Second, oh Mondays, okay. The fourteenth. Okay.
So the third is one date?
Seventeenth.
And um.
And.
If we're all good, we'll just go for the third.
Or we have to give him at least two dates. March, as you say, March twenty seventh, was that?
March twenty seventh, it worked.
What about March tenth?
March tenth?
Uh, you mean April?
I'm sorry, April.
Yeah.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Carl? Um, the secondary option to them, March or April tenth?
As far as I know.
Yeah.
And I'm not hearing any no's. Right, so those, how about those two days?
What time are you proposing?
What's that?
Time are you proposing?
I think we can.
Seven?
Propose seven and see what they come up with.
Get too early, you know, like Mike has to work and get home and then. Get here to get it at six, you're gonna. Might be missing one person.
As the back, one of those states.
Yeah, well.
Want to throw out another one or or just two or nothing?
Well, let's just shoot them two and see what can we get coming back from them.
Okay, I may come back with a couple of dates.
It's okay, we'll try again if we have to.
Well, you know, if they if they talk about the, what's twenty seventh or that week, there's a no go and no way for that.
But what's the twenty seven a bad day, the twentieth was, but what?
Oh, that's true.
Right, yeah. We got them.
Yeah.
Next meeting is equal second, seven P M. All right, we're at public comment. Oh, we have. First, we'll see if we can get here, no, go ahead, we'll get zoom after this. Do have somebody in Zoom too.
Kim Angus, fifty one oh one Brown Bear. Um, I did wanna let you know, uh there was some discussion on the private roads. I was able to locate a majority of the previous versions, um I haven't been able to extract them and compile them yet. But um they will be available, um I should be able to make them available to you, um. I did have a little bit of concern on your discussion for the um veterinary clinic special use. When you do, um I guess, it maybe it's a question, did you do a roll call vote on approval of your findings of fact?
This is a question and answer, this is like a poll account.
Okay, I did not catch that you ever did a vote on your special use permit amendment? Okay.
One on finding impacts and one on uh the uh special.
Okay, um and with that, it was done out of order. Uh, the public hearing should have been closed per your agenda and then opened up again under your agenda item for the discussion. Um, so going, uh it's not a big deal with this one, it's a use by right. But going forward, um you can get into some legal issues if things are not discussed in the order in which they appear on your agenda. I can explain it later if you would like, so. Um, just wanted to um bring that up, I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Connie? You're up.
Thank you, um just a couple of things, uh I know you talked about making copies of the master plan, um. So. That's like thirty copies and a hundred and fifty pages is about four hundred, forty five hundred pages. So I was wondering if you would want to call around some of those people and make sure they all want copies with uh. You know, we could save money, save paper, save trees, save, it's gonna probably be posted on the website anyway, so. Uh, if you'd wanna do that, the other thing is, the conversation of um Mike and and Carl had about. Um, calling other townships and finding out or looking at their ordinances, I think that, you know, the idea of that is just. That it gives us a jumping off point, somewhere to start, something to look at. Um, I agree, we don't wanna carbon copy their ordinances and stuff, but we don't need to reinvent the wheel with some of these ordinances. Um, we have a down, I'm down in Monroe right now, um, there's a community down here that just did short term rentals. And they are lakefront properties and they did not want short term rentals, and so their short term rental um ordinance. States nothing less than twenty nine days, so your ordinance can be anything you want it to be, you, that's why you write it. You know, that's why you listen to your community and what they want, and I know we had, um, you know, the marijuana debacle that went on. Um, does it behoove us to check with the community and do a poll and see what people think about short term rentals? So we know what kind of ordinance to write before we write something up and and spend all that money and time. And then find out that they're just gonna throw it to the wind anyway in a public hearing, so, I don't know, those are just some ideas. Um, you guys had a great meeting tonight, thanks so much for um all your effort and time that you put into the township, I appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you, uh Connie, could you give us your name?
Connie Hymore, H Y M O R E, sorry about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Oh, all right. So to recap, for the next meeting, um I'm gonna look at. The the three lists of priorities, the short term rentals, private roads, and uh department line, trying to come up with a. Uh list for the ROS of that. Uh definitions, we're gonna look at the definitions that we already have. Uh, with a a list from Deb and Randy, uh the ones that are biggest issues. We'll start with them, so if everybody would kind of research that this next month and be ready next month to talk about that. Talk about the uh. Redevelopment uh next month when Randy comes back from his meeting. We're gonna check on uh what the uh record is for where our. Public hearings are to be published. Anybody, anything else, anybody?
Uh, ma- maybe uh get a sign up sheet for anybody that wants to be on the ROS.
Yes.
Um, on the table here for the next meet, any meeting, right, and then also um. A list of a sign up sheet for anybody who wants to get the agenda emailed to them and the community newsletter. Uh, that those that were, those list or rosters were deleted from the computers, so we have to generate a whole new. Um, list of people that wanna get things by by email.
Talk about next meeting then.
Okay.
Then in the next meeting.
Did you say the list of emails that were?
The the names that they were using, that they um. Had sending people agenda, the meeting packets and all that, that was deleted, um so.
I think the township treasurer had a list at one time, but.
Yes.
I think Lois used to do that.
Yeah, Lois did, and then the the treasurer had a list and that was deleted for the community newsletter, I believe. And.
Yes.
But. And there were a whole group of people that requested.
Yes.
Uh like, like, when I, when I finally quit here, I'm gonna still request a hard copy of your meetings, cause I'm gonna still pay attention. So.
Is that a warning that I'm gonna have to print that for each month and put your name on it?
Tell you right now.
Right. No, I do print it, it's always ready for you whenever you.
Yeah, I'm getting it.
I know.
I've always gotten a hard copy of before the meeting, uh it's a lot easier for me to work with. Uh, and I, I'm not gonna try to print thirty, forty pages at home, uh so I I. As long as I know it's here, I'll just pick it up, it's. Yeah, three, four days ahead of the meeting, it's fine.
Um.
But I think I got this a lot earlier and as you look at it, although I. I'm gonna talk to this machine.
Yeah.
Anything else for the next meeting?
Well.
There's something I'm not doing right.
If if we could, if you want the um any definitions like the whitewater township definitions or something, and then Deb's requested. Items of for action, uh if we can get that as soon as possible, not wait to like ten days before, because our schedules vary. In terms of what time we can move.
Possible, Deb?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. That old email.
I'll take it back out, um. There's a training class coming up on Jan, on March nineteenth and twentieth, it's gonna be here in the building. I've only had a couple of people say they had an interest in attending, I mean, I can do this from home, it's zoning essentials. It runs from six to eight P M. I've already signed up, nobody else needs to pay ninety five dollars, if everybody wants to do it from home, you can pay a hundred bucks and do it. Um, I gave a summary of it, it's on page forty one of your packet. Um, but it's two, uh two nights in a row from six to eight, and I just figure I'll plug my laptop in and just run it on the big screen if people wanna come here and. Participate in that, so, but let me know if you're gonna do it, cause if I don't have enough people wanting to do it, I'll, I can watch it at home. I don't need to come here and do it, um one thing I did find today, I had a gentleman come in and talk to me about um. Some lots down on Island Lake, and um article fifteen of the old zoning ordinance is. Um, didn't get included in the new revised ordinance, so article fifteen, I just wanted on the record, article fifteen is not in the up ordinance update. And that's one of the items that will need to be amended, um I talked to Randy about it earlier, and he doesn't know how it got missed, but that was. An entire section, and I think there were only two items, uh fifteen, ten and eleven, fifteen point one oh and fifteen point one one of the old ordinance. So that needs to be part of an upcoming amendment and hearing that's going on. So, that's all I had, thanks.
Just to avoid confusion though, the um the issue on the training, that's the same flyer that was in your packet about two months ago, that's the same thing.
See, I have a question, keep um above the continuing ad. Keynotes to share, which we just covered, action items for PC members reviewed. For the purpose of the minutes, uh discussed above, or there's.
Right along with it was the, you know, the short term rentals, list of priorities for each one. Short term rentals, private roads, line, primary.
I just wanted to make sure it was addressed here.
All right, I guess there would just entertain a motion to.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Gibson, roll call. Roll call, right?
Meeting ends nine fifty seven.
Yeah, yeah.
These, these are good work these ones.
Yeah.
Did that?
They they, you made the meeting.
That's what I know of.
Is it posted on the website now?
The township for real. Yeah, the first one and then.
Ask for a copy of the meeting.